I would like to call the May eighteenth, twenty twenty three, uh, Wall City Council meeting to order. And Carolyn, would you please do roll call for us?
Welsh, you're Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Hawk. Mike Anderson.
Here.
We do have a form.
Okay, thank you. Let us stand and, um, give you the flag a little bit. Yes, could you read it? Read it for us?
True. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Do we have any order of business for emergencies?
No, we don't.
And do we have anyone attending on Zoom?
No, clearly not.
We do have, um.
The attorney on the telegraph.
Okay. And can you hear us, Ms. Trask?
I can hear you good.
Okay, very good. So therefore, I would, uh, ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Finn moved, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Any conflict of interest that needs to be declared? Seeing none, I would, uh, like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes of the May fourth and May eighth city council meetings, the minutes of the April eleventh fire department minutes, uh, the city of Wall Fire Department Library and September claims. And I noticed at the last fire department, they had fifteen people attending that, uh, department meeting. I thought that was excellent. A budget review, and golf course, sales tax, and cash and money market balance. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Kelly's moved.
Second.
And Rick has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, with that, we will move into item number nine, which is, uh, a quality-driven service pay request number one for Echo Valley. The amount is forty thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. And that document was included in the packet that was sent out. Carolyn, is there anything you would like to visit about that particular, um, uh, service pay request?
Um, not really. Tim kind of covered it, what the request was for in that document, Echo Valley update, so, um, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, and noticing that it is covering things like culverts.
And I think some upfront costs.
Mobilization, it appears to. Um, which we do see equipment out there right now, so. Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, forty thousand, four hundred and ten dollar pay request number one? For, Stan's moved. Do I have?
Second.
Mike is seconded. Any discussion or questions or concerns? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And if I'm correct, Carolyn, that will be submitted to South Dakota Housing.
Yeah, yes, um, once it's cashed in, all that moves.
Is that how that'll work? We'll have to pay each time and then we'll get, we'll get the money back at South Dakota Housing?
Yeah, after I can show that the cap check has been cashed, so it, you know, however long goes through the bank and have that documentation plus a copy of the invoice and all those requirements, then yes.
And so that's when our interest will start, but it will only start on that amount.
Yeah, right.
And then that, um, that interest rate at this point is one percent. Okay, so we have, um, approved that pay request. So then, um, neither, uh, Tim or Hartman or Dana could be here today to give us an update. But, uh, on the Echo Valley subdivision phase one, they plan to start at the lift station, which is on the north end of Stone Drive, work with sewer pipe up for the project, they say. And most notably within Stone Drive. There will be three water type taps that are planned to be installed. Stone Drive is going to be closed, May twenty-second, Monday. Um, and possibly for three to four weeks as the contractors continue to work.
Close through traffic.
Yeah. So it will, it, there is traffic signs at Frontier Cabs on the Service Road and be, will be closed, uh, right to the north edge of, why I call it Reese's House, that house there on the corner. So everyone basically on Stone Drive is gonna have to go south to go Gulfport Road. And, and then back in. And, um, they are still finalizing plans to utilize the milling and recycled material from the airport. So thank you, Stan, again for your marvelous idea on putting us on that because as indicated here, it's gonna save us about sixteen. I thought it was gonna be eighteen thousand, but now it's down to sixteen. And, um, they will have a full-time onsite observer. Now, with that being said, I'm gonna share these maps with Rick because you are a councilman for that ward. I'm gonna share it with Stan because he has property up there. I'm gonna stay and save that, send that map to Mike because he's councilman up there. The, there's a lot of people out there that have no idea, even though I have been talking about this since, uh, we started trying to get that loan, which was probably, what, June of last year, that don't know what's going on up there. So there's a map. And I would, uh, study that map and explain to those people where that street's gonna go because that might be news to some of them also. With that being said, I, I'm just counting on you carrying that conversation for us.
Could we possibly get one, two?
Oh.
We get, we get questions.
Oh.
About sure, things like that, too.
I will either email that to you or have Carolyn make a colored copy for you because it looks best in color.
Well, of course.
And I drew some stuff on there that's important, too. And keep in mind, as you're explaining this, we're only doing phase one. So make sure you know where phase one is. Make sure you know where your twenty-four lots are. That, um, fifteen of those twenty-four are affordable housing, have a max of three hundred and forty thousand dollars on them. Okay.
I would assume the contractor might let everybody know out there it's gonna be closed or they have to find the head time or not.
What's that?
I assume the contractor might let everybody that lives out there give them a little bit of notice that it's gonna be closed.
You see, that's what I'm saying to you. I'm not sure that's happened.
I asked. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I asked them, they had this, they had the road closed last week on like, what was it, Thursday, Friday? Yeah, I think so. And I called them and told them to take it down because they weren't even working. And I told them that they need to notify the residents.
That'd be kind of nice, just.
And I re, I repeated that in an email after I got this email that said they were gonna start today. And I said, no, this is graduation weekend. County has pulled that on people on St. script Road and we are not gonna do this on Stone Drive. So please start on Monday. And Tim carried through with that request. But for questions I've been getting from people out there, I, I just don't think this conversation got out there. So I'm counting on you guys to help carry the, and, and I'm sorry, Kelly, I, I just.
People just, they're renounce them, say some asks question.
Yeah, like, would you like one, Jerry?
Please.
Okay, we'll get, we'll make that happen. Okay, so make a note at the end of the meeting, make a colored map for Jerry and Kelly.
That St. Creed feels about they are.
Jerry, well, we don't have to copy it.
Going Canaga or going New Underwood to come to law.
And it's seventy-two miles one way and like eighty-five and something the other. Those people, they would have liked to just not come to school all week, but it happens to be graduation week, finals week. So that's what they're doing to try to get to school.
I was planning, talk to me on it, this graduation weekend, a whole bunch of company coming in. St. Creed building clothes they were.
But in real life, um, they're putting in culverts which are needed badly and they're gonna chip and seal that, which that'll be fun to see if that dirt actually blows, dirt drips across, chip and seal like it does on the gravel, but anyway. Anyway, I just did not want that to happen this weekend. Okay, so moving right along on this report. Industrial Park is, uh, they are coordinating the closeout there. The Hanson subdivision phase one is completely closed and they're working on the final design of Fourth Avenue, which that will go to bid this fall to be started next, early next spring. Okay, any questions or concern on that message? And Mr. Hartman will be here next meeting then to give us an update of what's been accomplished. Start after the start on Monday. Okay, so that brings us to item number ten, superintendent report. Dr. Zimmern, you've gotta be doing like jumping jacks, right? To think.
Let's get your maid first.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, good evening. Uh, I, I'm happy to be here. We do have graduation on, on Saturday at Baccalaureate twelve and at one thirty, the class of two thousand and twenty-three march across the stage, so. Lowly hope, I will miss those characters. I only had to deal with him for two years, but I will miss. Uh, but, uh, and our kindergarten graduation is the Wednesday evening, the twenty-fourth at five thirty. And our last day of school is, um, May twenty-fifth. Our track, our state track, I, I haven't actually got the, uh, final results on regions today. Sorry about that, but they'll be headed out for state in St. Baltimore, twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. And golf date will be, the regions are on Monday and their state competition is June fourth through the sixth. Um, we also have it set up, the powerhouse. We will have, uh, it open to the community starting June fifth, Monday through Friday, from five thirty to seven thirty. We have somebody that will be working this summer, um, to monitor it and it'll be open to the community.
And what's the time of nose?
Five thirty to seven thirty.
So I'm curious.
Yeah, or is that eight thirty P M. or is that?
Yeah. Five thirty, five thirty P M., two hours every evening for, for evening. In the morning, our high school kids are doing weights. Thank you for pointing that out.
Andy, is that Monday through Friday?
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday.
And I'd like you to tell us, I know that you got a CTE grant, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, largest one in the state. And what will that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars do?
It's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's going to be put into the, um, three point, three point five million dollar estimates for construction. And, uh, so it's not just one individual thing, it's, it's brought into the whole budget for construction. So. With, there was five schools that received that grant. Um, the other West River School was Edgemont and they are, uh, they are receiving simulators for like heavy equipment operating. And, uh, it's interesting, Belkwood did, had, uh, received the same grant last year for the heavy simulators and now they are working for the C D L program for their students and working for local heavy equipment operators for kids to actually go out and use that equipment, so. But, uh, we followed the pattern that, uh, the River School District did. Last year, they put in for this grant for their C T complex, so. Pretty exciting, so.
It is.
We did put in for a, uh, school lunch program grant. We'll see what happens there, uh, for some equipment and, uh, fresh produce and, uh, we are putting in for some title funds for possibly some other summer activities. So we'll see if we receive those, too. We did receive, um, E funding for putting in new Wi-Fi in the school as well as a grant, home net security grant to update the, um, external doors in the, um, the doors to the office and so forth, and a panic button for, there's an emergency, we shut everything down. That'll start in, that project will start in November. So, any other questions? Ready to play that song, school's out for the summer. All right, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good work. Okay, so then that brings us to item number eleven and that's that Hartman agenda request.
That's me on behalf of Zach.
Okay, I was wondering, I thought he was still maybe away.
Favor, I guess, maybe come. Um, so, uh, we are, uh, so the May fourth last meeting, uh, it was stated that the curves on Sixth Street on the south side of the road would be painted two to three car lengths or suggested, I guess. Um, and they were painted on both sides of the street and, uh, on the north side, they were painted three and on the south side, our side, six, uh, they were painted five. And I guess we were just wondering why.
Grant, Grant, the three and the five, is that car lengths?
Correct, sorry, car lengths. Um, which in the five car lengths actually eliminates all of our street parking there on, on, uh, First Day Wall. And we were just, uh, you know, kind of wondering why it was like that, um, without any discussion and also to get at least one parking space on the street to get all the way from us, so. There's, we've realized that my traffic going by the big vehicles. Uh, but there's a lot bigger ones that go down Crate Road and, and Fourth Avenue over there and, and there's no yellow paint over there. Um, we have the biggest curb in town, yellow curb in town now, so I guess we're just kind of wondering why. And that's it.
Okay, I might just speak that it's because of concern of safety, number one. And interesting enough, as I was coming to the meeting tonight, I followed that long trailer that T D M's pulling and I think it's from fertilizer. I'd seen him make that turn from the, from the north and tonight I got to watch him from the south. And the other interesting thing is you just go over to that street and you watch where their tire tractors are, tire marks are, you can just see how much room it takes to get those trucks in there. And that's why, what was considered when we knew there just can't be cars on both sides of that street. But Garrett, what are some things that you've, um, worked on in terms of that, um, particular street?
Found out that the, I don't remember the exact distance, but the one that, the, on the east side of, Glen, the street is a lot smaller. Sorry, I don't remember.
So we're talking Sixth Street?
Yep, so Sixth Avenue from Glen East is thirty-nine feet wide. And then on the west side is forty-six feet, three inches wide.
And most of the streets are the forty-seven.
What's that?
I think most of, most of the other streets would be.
Most of them, yeah, we have quite a few narrow streets.
So that's.
So I guess you mentioned that there wasn't enough room to park on both sides. I'm just wondering why we got the short end of the straw on that one and. What does, I'll explain that. So, so if the truck's coming from the south and turning there, it's blocked back thirty feet so they can make the turn to go there so they don't hit a car. And then when they come from the north and they turn there, they have to go wide over there. And when they come out of their lot, they have to turn wide over there. So if they were coming from, you know, the other direction, there, that would be an issue over there, the cars that parked there. Like Mary said, if you look at the tire tracks, you can see.
Garrett, what were the, how wide was that street?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine and, and, and then over by, by the powerhouse.
Forty-six.
Yeah, forty-six.
Oh, wow, that's that much different, wow.
And we can't explain why once, I mean, I can't explain why one street would be that much narrower um, than the other, but, um, that's just the way it is. And there's gonna be cars. And it, and it was interesting, that truck tonight had to pull wide enough because if he didn't, he would have taken out the stop sign. He's gotta get, he's gotta get him far enough over on that other side so he doesn't hit the curb and stop sign on this side. And coming from the other way, same thing. He's gotta take that wide enough so he can make that corner.
You should have enough. I mean, I'm sure it'll take a little rearranging, but your, then your frontage is fairly wide. I mean, you should have plenty of parking on site as well, wouldn't you? A little work.
That's, I guess that's not why I'm here, but.
So I guess the answer would just be we're concerned about safety.
All right.
Somebody's, something's gonna get hit.
That gave me a list of things to say and I can't say anything else, so.
And I, I would also suggest that maybe you take the marking down because that's not really legal and if there happens to be an accident that's caused because somebody's taking a picture, you may be liable or at some point ticketed or.
I guess I would call it into that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Grant.
There's, you know, here still.
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, I just wanted, you know, since someone was able to comment on the, the traffic over there and got painted right away, I wanted to address the, the trash problem that comes down this entire alley and blows all the way down. It's been doing that for decades, ever since forever, like you can see trash forever. And now that I'm more in charge of my grandparents' property, I see it a lot more. And, um, I just would like to see if the city can hold businesses accountable for containing their trash. You were very busy on city cleanup day. I saw you in the alley.
Well, thank you because the pictures you took, I never took pictures before I started that day at cleanup. But the pictures you took showed what I did clean up in that area.
Oh, yeah.
And what I'm really happy about, Grant, is that you are indicating that constituents really care how our community looks. Not just our main street and our main, um, avenues, which the Public Works does a great job on, keeping them clean, sanitizing, sweeping, painting curbs everywhere, sidewalk, walkways. So the Public Works does great things, but you're telling me that people in Wall care about how Wall looks. And so I hoped you took time, maybe some time today, to stroll, um, behind in this alley because, um, that, that alley looks way better today than it did two days ago.
I appreciate that, but it's gonna just happen again. It doesn't really get addressed and that's just, that was just my point, that's all.
So.
I agree with you, Grant.
I think we decided that we're gonna, we are gonna send a letter out to all the people on Main Street there. I have an alley that, just to remind them that they're responsible for, I don't know, on the front, but the back.
First of all, we're gonna say thank you. We're gonna send it to both sides because both sides has alleys. We're gonna say thank you for those that make the effort to keep it cleaned up and then request that they figure out how to contain their trash because you're exactly right. If they put, if they overflow their containers, then it blows because blow, wind blows in South Dakota. And so that would be our request. So would you find that, or do you feel that would be helpful?
That'd be helpful.
Okay?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
And for taking the pic, the pictures. Okay, that's item number twelve. Now, number thirteen, Mr. Coates, how are you tonight?
Good. So I met a gentleman named Tony Marani, he's turned me on to this class two Indian casino gaming and, uh, he's claiming to me that, um, under Title twenty-five, it's called, that Indian nations can have casinos, not just on trust lands, but it's called native use lands. And, um, we're trying to get permission and work with one of the tribes, Lower Brule or Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, or both. Um, and basically it runs off bingo and they use, it looks like slot machines, it's, uh, so you can have basically slot machines, but in the machines themselves, there's these little bingo cards and the little corners are really small, but it runs with the same odds as bingo is kind of how it works. And then also in that same Title twenty-five, it says that, um, you can have card games, which would be blackjack or poker in this state, maybe the three cards poker, too. But whatever card games the state allows, we could have that as well. And it would be, um, funded, corporation comes in, they build it, they finance it for me, they hire FBI-approved people to run it and staff it. And, um, basically I signed a long-term lease. Um, we make side deals with the city to pay city taxes per year, the same with the county. Um, basically, and they've done them in Montana, North Dakota, this gentleman I'm working with, they come in, they design it. They, you know, they pretty much do everything for you. And that's what I'm, I would like the city and the council and the town to get behind me on this, be a big boon for the town, not just for my family. But I think, I mean, the, in the marginal months, I think we could increase our business in this town dramatically. And, you know, especially with the motels and restaurants and gift shops, I mean, you know, we see what it, you know, Deadwood, obviously we can't use Deadwood as an example because this is only the one casino. But I think it would be amazing for those barrier months where we're not really busy and just bring a lot more people to town and the kind of clientele that we'd like to see that, that might have some deeper pockets as well. And so I'd like permission and get, you know, work out the details and any questions can be directed towards Tony. He said, you know, I can give his name and number out. He can answer any questions that you guys have. And, you know, I would, I, I don't wanna go through the whole process and then be turned out by the city, so I'm getting ahead of it. And, you know, we're trying to work together on this project. And so that's why I'm coming to you guys now. I'm trying to explain how it works and, uh, it's, it's run under the National Indian Gaming. It's not run by the state. It's run by a National Indian Gaming Commission. They come in and do audits every year to make everything's on the up and out. So there's a lot of controls, even though it's not run by the state. And we, I'd like to be the first one to have in the state. Uh, I think it'd be very good for this town for not just, you know, not for just Main Street, but for everybody. So that's why I'm here.
Where's Tony from?
Um, he was originally from the Lower Brule Tribe area, now he lives in North Dakota. It's actually Carla Hawk is who he's with now. That's how I met him. But he's very sharp. He's done it a lot of times.
Well, I know they've tried and tried to do, I mean, numerous places have tried to do that. They tried to.
I think they were trying to do class three, though.
Could be.
Which is completely different ballgame. So, you know, I'm, I've been, I've been contacting attorneys, uh, you know, trying to make sure that this was legal beforehand, before I came up here. And, you know, I haven't had anyone tell me it's not yet. I'm still waiting for that.
So, would it be um. Would it be helpful if we uh, sat down with a committee of council people with you and. And just discuss this in more detail, because obviously, we can't. We don't know enough about it, and it sounds like you're still exploring it. Um, when you get to the point where you want to. Set down with a committee and visit about this, we could explore that and.
Well, I thought, you know, maybe if we worked out some of the details before. So, you know, you guys kinda have an understanding before you guys make decisions, we could have it all. Kinda mapped out, you know, exactly what we're talking about, you know, to to the T. And then you guys could kinda have, you know, instead of meeting and uh. I guess. Meeting with that, meeting with me, we work out all the deep, I I just would like to. You know, I kinda like to get ahead of the game and get it, get the process started, you know what I'm saying? And if it's just a totally dead subject. Then I don't wanna be beating my head against the wall, you know, if it's just a no, no chance whatsoever, you understand what I'm saying? Cause I need to be doing something with the property, obviously, so the longer. That it drags on, the worse it is for me, obviously, so. You know, I I just wanted to get a little feedback. And any, any help, any, any help from the council will be much appreciated. And, you know, any wisdom you have about it, you know, maybe Stan knows more about it than I do, he ran a casino or part of a casino. But, you know, this gentleman's done it, he's done it in different states. Seems, you know, Carla was a Native American attorney at one time, you know, they seemed very reliable and, you know, that's what he does for a living, so. I uh, I just wanted to. Wanna get the ball rolling, as they say. And, and see what your guys' thoughts are, your positives, negatives, you know. And start feeling out this process. If it's, if it's a no, if it's, there's a no chance, then, you know, I I don't wanna. You know, waste their time and my time and. Everybody's time.
What kind of building?
Well, probably, it'd just be a two story. Two story building, I'm not quite sure of the, you know, we were talking. Couple different things, whether it be a motel upstairs or gaming upstairs, just have a full casino, and there'd be no. Rooms, whatever, or the other option too could be a, you know, there'd be a restaurant bar and then casino too type situation.
So, Stephanie Trask is on the phone, have if. You have anything that you could shed on this?
Uh, probably too new to it, but I'm certainly willing to um, get myself. A bit more informed on it and then, I could.
I called the State Gaming Association, you know, I was asking them questions. And they said they, they have no jurisdiction, they have no, nothing to do with that. And it's all national. So, National Indian Gaming is who controls that. So. Any questions I might be able to answer. Now, what would you guys like me to do, you know, you know, this. Basically, he told me, you know, you work out the agreements with the city and the county ahead of time. So we're not trying to get out of the, those taxes, we're trying to keep the roads up and, you know, make sure everybody gets paid. And the amount of sales tax, you know, we could work out that too, but it, you know. Be a boon for the town. Obviously, more than anything the cactus and the cactus. And they do have, they would have a competitive advantage over Deadwood, there's, you know, they don't have a. I think Deadwood has a two thousand dollar per machine tax. Something like that, I'm not sure if, you know, don't quote me on that, but that's what I thought I read in the. State rules, I was trying to read the state rules and then the national rules. On the National Indian Gaming rules, but um, you know, I I think it would be. Incredible.
And. I would say um, it would be helpful for me. If you could put as much information about your proposal down in writing. And some of the research references that you've made in writing, so that I.
Yeah, there's, yeah, and Tony is uh. He's, he's an old activist, he's, he's, you know, they fought this in court on many levels already, obviously, you know, there's been problems in the past. And, you know, you know, I think we can probably come up with a full. We could come up with the full. Contract, you know, kinda how everything could, could be laid out with exact percentages. For the city, county, and, you know, exactly how. The whole thing works, because, you know, it's all new to me too, I'm, I'm learning as we go also, it's not my specialty, obviously. But, you know, I think. You know, it, it, it sounds amazing, you know, it's FBI approved managers. You know, it just, everything about it sounds. And, you know, it sounds wonderful for, for my family and and I think for the town, I think it would be just. Incredible. So.
I'd like, personally, I would like Stephanie to look into it to make sure.
Or, well.
I think it'd be good if you give, if you give, maybe you give it to um. Carolyn or get it to Stephanie, his contact information.
Yeah, I, I.
Tony and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would appreciate basically an overview of kind of what you've presented. Um, and, and the contact information and then any of those contacts that you've been in touch with, cause. No need to rehash conversations we've already had that you put in your overview, I can just. Reference that and any other citations, uh, and then I can start doing some research.
And then, you know, if you wanna look up an example, what I'm talking about, it's, it's called the Golden Buffalo Casino in North Dakota is the last one they've done. So I looked it up, you know, seen how they were operating and, you know.
And that's where?
It's in North Dakota.
I, where, what city?
I'm not sure. I don't even know if it's in a city. But I'm sure Tony, you know, he's put together these deals, he can give you a full, full paperwork. You know, and cite the laws and this and, you know. That, that Title twenty five is pretty interesting when you start reading it.
So Jimmy, did you um. Were you able to give him like measurements of your lot and he felt confident that he could make something work, it was just how many levels or?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, and then. You know, once we get past, if we get past the okay stage, you know, maybe, you know. I always think in my head, you know, we wanna make it the best we can, you know, maybe we make an offer for. The property next to me or the property to, you know, you know, Rick never sells property, but. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, every now and then.
What's that?
Every now and then, Jimmy, there's a Golden Buffalo Casino in Lower Brule. That isn't, it is.
No, well, he's done some, that's, there's, there's a couple of.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and they named them the same thing.
One in South Dakota, just a rather, yeah, casino. Five machine, oh, I see.
Yeah, this would be a class two is what would make it different. I, I don't think we can do a class three. Without the state's permission, but this one can be done without the state's permission.
And was he aware of why there wasn't one in South Dakota yet? He never made you aware of it.
Well. I kept asking him this. And he said because. Nobody's read the, nobody's gone through the process and. Actually tried to do it, is what he told me, and I asked him, what are the, okay, what's the worst case scenario, what can, you know, what could stop this? You know, can the, can the state come in, can, you know, who could come in and stop it, how? How can this be stopped? What troubles have you run into in the past, you know, with. Trying to do these in other states. And, you know, basically, he, he's telling me, you know, if you give the city count, the, the taxes is the biggest thing. Uh, because people don't want those tax revenues in the cities and the counties and stuff like that, so you make. You, you know. That's when they learn to negotiate the deals.
Jimmy, I think you must have the wrong name. Cause all that comes up is South Dakota. For the Golden Buffalo. I put in Golden Buffalo in North Dakota, nothing's coming up.
Well, maybe I did. I thought it was. Check, check again, I thought, I thought there was one in North Dakota too.
There's, yeah, there's a, there's a very large one up there and I know. Can't think of the, it's Golden something.
Yeah, and I, I actually looked at their website for the one in North Dakota.
Yeah, I think there is one in kinda west of Bismarck.
Yeah, that's, I think that's right.
And I don't know if it has something to do with saying Montana and North Dakota, because they don't have any legalized gambling. South Dakota has, so. I don't think, I think they can do it or nothing.
But, you know, it sounds fascinating. And it would keep people here longer, you know. I, I think, you know, maybe instead of a one night wonder, you might get a weekend. Or three nights, you know, a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or. Maybe they plan their whole vacation, a whole week, instead of just a day or two, you know, I think it extends. Certain people's stay times.
Was it four bears?
I think that's it.
Yeah. So that's the one that I'm kinda familiar with, um.
Well, yeah, he, he, I, I know he did the Golden Buffalo one for sure.
So, I think what I hear is that it. It's interesting and we need more information.
Sure.
And I guess.
That's why I just wanted to get the ball rolling with attorney. And, you know, so the guys can start asking, she can start asking all the questions. Any of the questions I have been.
Exactly.
As I've been trying to ask all the questions that I can think of, and I think I do a pretty good job by asking questions, cause. I just, you know, I, I, I didn't believe it, and I, you know, I kinda still don't believe it, but.
I've hardly been believing it myself. I'm not saying that.
Sure.
In our own other bodies.
Well, you know, it's just, you know. Certain circumstances, you know, happen and, you know, the, the opportunities sometimes are there and people don't realize it. And.
It just seems kinda hard to believe that it really is that easy and that legal.
Well, that's what I keep saying too, Stan, cause, and he, and he, you know, and he tells me this too. He's like, you know, kinda keep it close to your vest for a while, because he's afraid somebody else is gonna jump on it.
Well, we'll be helping you open up.
Well, yeah, yeah, of course, of course. I've got many ideas stolen from you in the past.
Oh, okay, so.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll get her the number and contact me, I mean, he's fully expecting a call.
Okay.
And um, I'm still working on um. He's gonna kinda represent me. Um, as far as the deal making process, kinda hold my hand through it, lead me through it. You know, because he's been through it, but, you know, there'll also be attorney involved too. And I tried to get Carla, but she's not practicing anymore, she doesn't. But, you know, I'm, I'm, today I was calling attorney, I was trying to get attorneys. But, you know, the ones that know this guy's, you know, it's, it's kind of a specialty lawyer that has to deal with this.
Sure.
And of course, you know, the guy that I was referred to at USD. And in college, he just retired last year, and that's. You know, I've been trying to get his number from the university, uh, because I guess this is the guy that I need to have. He's super sharp about it, with native laws, completely different set of laws and. But uh, yeah, I'm, you know, if we find out it's not, that's fine, I just, I wanna get the ball rolling. You know, if everything he tells me is true, which, I mean, the guy's. Seems super sharp and he's with Carla, and, you know, I gotta, I gotta take him at his word. And I've called the guy, you know, I've called, poor guy, I call him all the time, I call him every day. Asking more questions, I said, I don't wanna get up in front of the council, look like an idiot. So, you know, please don't make me look like an idiot coming up here and asking you guys this, and he says, no. Go for it, give him my number and let's get it rolling.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, well, sounds good, we'll be anxious to hear more. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving uh, forward to public comments, is there anyone that would like to speak? Um, for um, maximum of three minutes? Miss Manny.
Hi, Manny Russo. I'm gonna just apologize, I'm not as exciting as Lee is. Um, but Grant was up here earlier and had some question, a variety of questions. I have a question about the comment that Stan made about his marquee, they can marquee down because it's not legal. The marquee's been there for a long time, what, what part of it?
Well, I have a marquee, which is what he says on it.
Oh, okay.
It just says, the marquee says. Yellow marking is uh, for. People that park and take pictures and things.
So it's not the marquee that's the problem, it's the message that, that is on the marquee.
It's what, so. Because it kinda says, yellow means you can't park there. What they have written, what they have printed out on your marquee says you can park there.
So, yeah, yellow is reserved, reserved parking for jackalope photos.
So it's the message that we're concerned about, not the actual marquee?
Right.
And I feel where you're coming from on a yellow curb, but this curb in front of the facility here is yellow, and we park in front of that all the time. So, I mean, if yellow is truly not.
Here's what we're trying to solve there is the, the trucks.
I totally get that. I'm just saying that if yellow is not parking, then that should be a consistent message across the city. My next question regardless is. As a business owner, if we choose to put a marquee up on our property, does the message have to be approved prior to presenting it? At any point in time or? I mean, you have a concern with the message, and I understand what your concern is with the message, I'm just trying to get a better feel for what the process should look like.
I don't think so. In your marquees, most of the hotels have marquees that might have table rates or.
So you can put whatever you want up there.
Well.
Some of this is probably not been written, in my opinion.
Well, then, I think part of your point was the message on there could ultimately, he doesn't want Grant or Zach to be respected. Were to happen, and that was on there. If, if the city knew that it was on there and an accident occurred, as long as we said. You probably shouldn't have that on there, and you understand the liability of it being on there. And you put it up there. Or I think it's more along the lines of. Making them aware that they could be potentially putting themselves at risk.
How long has the message been up?
For years or days, I think.
And this is the first time you've addressed it with them?
It just went up.
Three days ago.
This is the first time we've met.
This is the first time we've had to meeting them.
But if you're concerned about your liability, then I would make a more of an attempt to make sure that the property owner is aware of your concern. I'm, my biggest concern was, I heard the marquee needed to come down, I didn't know it was because of the message, I wanted to clarify. What the problem was with the marquee, it sounds to me like there's just personal concerns about the message. And that's between you and the property owner, it's not between me and you guys, so I just wanted to make sure that. If we chose to do something, I understood what the process was, so, thank you for clarifying.
I think I just add to that, you know, certainly there can't be messaging on a marquee. That encourages traffic violations or violation of city ordinance. And then, the second part, yes, there's a First Amendment right, absolutely, but. We've had a situation in the past where a business owner exercised constitutional first right. To um, post messaging near the interstate that tourists from out of town. Were able to view, and though that was his right, uh, it was brought as a concern to the city. Um, for its possible effect on commerce and other things, and the business owner was. Gracious enough to recognize the city's concern and those possible implications and take that messaging down.
And that's fair, that, that's completely fair, and I understand the concern, I just think if we're gonna make a big point of it, it should have been addressed right away. Somebody saw it three days ago and. I, I mean, I didn't know what it says, so I can't.
Well, we didn't bring it up three days ago, but we knew he was on the agenda, and talk about the yellow. Signs, so we thought that'd be a good time to just bring it up.
Not, it's not between you and I, it's between you and the property owner, so I. I just wanna make sure I understand what, what the expectation is when we move forward with things, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Okay, moving forward then. Okay, moving forward then, we have building permits tonight. One, uh, the first one is for Marty Heaton for a fence in the backyard. Uh, Hope 324 West Fourth Avenue.
And you all got a copy of that and that's how it was, you know, thinking.
It's your.
Came through.
And he has the drawing.
Yeah. You know, it came through in color on your.
Still his yard, he's just in there all year now.
He's just adding another fence, just dividing it up.
But fences have to be approved by the council.
So, you need, you need a motion?
So, have you looked it over?
Yep.
Okay, so, motion has been moved to approve, and, and second, any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. Okay, then we have a, uh, another. Building permit for a barbecue food trailer. Um, to be on one oh two South Boulevard.
And I included a map, um, because the property owner was. Wanted it in that specific location, and so just trying to explain it.
Between the quilting shop and nine one one on the east side. So.
It has been moved and seconded to allow a barbecue food trailer lo- to be located between. Uh, the quilting shop and nine one one.
Is this the same one as last year? Oh, it isn't.
My brother-in-law.
It's what?
It's my brother-in-law. Uh, if you have any questions, I can probably answer them.
Rick Sabah, Sabah?
Yeah, that's my brother-in-law.
Okay. So, are there, there's been a motion and a second, is there any questions or comments or? How long are they planning on being here?
I don't know that that was actually indicated.
It wasn't though.
Because the other one, the last summer was only here a short time, so I didn't know.
What does it say, Scott Eisenbrow is the owner?
Oh, sorry?
Why does it say Scott Eisenbrow then is the owner?
He is the owner of the property.
Oh, just like a property. Gotcha.
Is it good barbecue, Jim?
I don't know, we were just, we were just putting together the truck the last month or two. Oh, he hasn't, he's actually moving from Florida, he's moving to Rapid City.
Okay.
Carolyn, do these, uh, food trucks ha- have to have a license from the South Florida Health Department?
I'm guessing they do, but.
When they file for their, uh, their taxes and stuff for city, or they automatically have them expected.
Very good.
And they have to post them on the inside, and they also need a sales tax license, correct? So. Okay, all right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
And then on another note to that, he had asked at the same time about. A, um, getting an alcohol license or beer license. He said alcohol, and I explained that the only license that was available was a on-off sale of that region's South Florida wine. But also explained that, um, there has been previous concern from the council of. That whole area has to be listed on the liquor license, it has to be. Or it's not per business, it's for the actually legal description. And I know, I don't know how many of you were maybe on the council, there was one other time that, um. Liquor license was issued to that location, and then afterwards, it was kind of. Thought about that maybe that shouldn't have been issued just because they can go anyplace on that property and drink legally. But that probably isn't in the best concern of the other businesses on that location. Where they all share the same legal description. So, I explained to him, I didn't have to bring that to you guys, and, um, before I would even consider doing the. Public hearing to issue that, so.
So, it's for the property?
Yes, for the property, not the business.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to explain all that, as I said I would. So, I don't know, I guess, how you want to move forward with that.
How, how does it work with stay well?
Well, he owns that whole property himself, he doesn't share it with another business.
But how does it, is, uh, does Zach be able to sell beer there?
As long as he's serving food, yes.
And, and then drank it on the site?
That whole area, just like your whole building in Waldrug, you can, or, you know, whatever.
The only thing which it kind of requires, I think you'll have to, which you don't have there yet, but I assume you have, so they have some bathrooms. And some sort, and I don't know, maybe there's bathrooms in that building.
Yeah, the old houses. He did, yeah.
Yeah, I think he did, I'm sure he has.
He's been doing something that I'm aware of buildings, hasn't he?
So, maybe one of them is the, the bathroom.
Yeah, but, well, we have to get something, that's getting to be a busy corner, and we do have old houses there.
Down on Main Street, but yeah.
Well, right now, all we're addressing is the barbecue, we are not addressing the alcohol. On this, what we just approved.
Yeah, and that's been approved, but I just, he had sent the question later, and it was kind of too late to get it on the. Agenda, and I just said, well, no, I don't think it was too late, but I just said it would have to be asked from you guys and. Or asked of you guys if you would consider issuing that. But I just wanted to explain the concern. Maybe, you know, it may not be a concern of you guys, but I just know that whole thing has to be included, so they can go anywhere and drink on that property and.
Does, does there have to be any kind of an enclosure or anything?
I mean, you could, with stipulations that you guys would want to put in place for that, I, that just needs to be considered.
I, I had the same problem when they, um, had the alcohol before. I have a problem selling alcohol out of a food truck. It just, to me, that just almost promotes drinking and driving. You usually go up to a food truck, get your food, and then leave. You don't. At least I don't sit there and eat, then you get your beer or wine or whatever and take off, right? I have, I personally have a problem with that, I don't know, maybe nobody else does, but that, to me, is a problem.
I would think we'd need to know the neighbors, I can't imagine the quilting place.
Yeah, kind of see a kind of a rope coming there.
Well, I would think of it, at which time he applies.
But, the only thing I have is, if you're serious about issuing it, I need to advertise for it. I have to have a hearing, because it's a new license, it's being issued, so.
I, I think, I, I think it needs to be brought before the council, and I also think. We're probably gonna want to take our time on this, because I, I think, having liquor there with. What is for different businesses, I think it's pretty complicated.
And Scott being the owner of the land, what?
Kind of expressed concern that it was.
Can I, can I speak from experience?
Okay, do you want to hear what she's saying about Scott's concern?
Well, he said he would just assume there wasn't alcohol served, or, you know, sold there, but he said. If the council doesn't have concern, then he gets, he maybe shouldn't have, but, but.
Okay, that was his preference, that not, okay.
Well, I. I don't know if you guys remember many years ago, when I had the fountain there, we had a bunch of construction guys down there breaking beer bottles. About three o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, and. You know, I asked them to vacate the property or help me clean up the beer, the beer bottles. And a couple of the guys attacked me, so I attacked them back, and I, I ended up getting sued. And my insurance wouldn't cover it, so I had to pay fifty thousand dollars out of pocket, even though we have a million dollar umbrella clause. And full insurance on the place. So, you know, and that's when there wasn't, I just, there wasn't any alcohol being served there, then these were just guys wandering through town. Who stopped the party with some of my employees there, but, uh, so, I mean, uh. That, that happened to me, and on my, when I owned it. And, uh, you know, my insurance company, I, I still don't understand what happened with the insurance. But I had to pay out of pocket to defend myself with that, and it ended up possibly a total of eighty thousand dollars, so.
Wow.
And I'm still mad about it, because I was, you know, we had insurance and we had an umbrella policy, and I paid.
So, what I hear you saying is, you're telling us this is not a good idea, we not go there.
I'm just telling you what happened to me, and there was no alcohol being served, it was, you know, just.
But there was drinking, but it wasn't served, okay. All right, so, um, then I think what I've heard the council say is that specifically. We don't, we don't have a decision to make, because we don't have something specific in front of us, so.
No, but.
He would. So. But, what are you gonna say? What do we want them to hear to say?
So, it kind of is coming to you through me, because he requested it, and I said, I needed to talk to the council first, because. When someone requests a liquor license and it's new, I need to publish that there's going to be a public hearing for the public to come and speak on it. So, I wasn't gonna publish something if you guys were gonna just turn it down right away. That's why I wanted to ask you if you would even consider, I mean, I'll move forward and put a publication in that you're going to consider. For open comment, I just didn't want to do that on it.
Do you think, like, he would come at the next council meeting?
I guess I don't know how soon he plans on getting.
He'll be here, first part of June, I think. They're leaving town on June first, so I think they'll be here by June third.
I would think that we wait till the council and talk, so then at that time, we, we decide to, we can publish.
Okay, I know, Kelly, who need to personally speak to you guys about.
Let us know his plan. And did you have a question?
Well, was there even an application filled out at this point about it? Because to me, that would be the first step.
The application is basically just a piece of paper that needs to be sent into the state, but. Again, I need to publish it in the paper, and why would I do, put that cost of publishing in a paper? If I don't talk to the council first and find out that they're not even interested in doing it.
So, there's no formal detailed application from the city or anybody else?
It's only an application that the state requires, because they need to have it in their files.
But, so at this point, I think we're saying, he needs to come talk to us and give us a more of an indication of what he's planning this. Okay, so then that moves us to Terry Lynch fence for chain link fence in his alley. Have you looked at this, Garrett?
Yep, yep, I understand it's gonna be set back farther within the alleys.
So, it's fine?
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved to approve?
Excellent.
Kelly seconded? Discussion, Jim?
Uh, you know, just to go back to the other subject.
Okay, just a minute, I have a motion on the floor, and then we'll go back, okay? Otherwise, I'll get lost here, okay? So, any other comments on the permit, billing permit for Terry Lynch chain link fence? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, before we go to signs and Jim, what?
Well, just, just to, to kind of make a comment, then, who, who would be held liable? Would it be Scott? Is, does he have to carry the insurance for that? Uh, or does the barbecue place have to carry the insurance? That's, that, that would be something. Uh, because trust me, no one's paying lawyers more than me, I'm six hundred thousand.
Well, I think it's, to me, it's a good question.
That's a question, yeah.
It's complicated, I know he did it, Jody did it just during rally, and we probably should have never really. And she kind of had an enclosure, I think she left him. But, in reality. And it's kind of really of the area, what is your opinion, Stephanie?
You know, I'm just, it's, it's no fun, so.
Uh, I think Scott Eisenbrow would be very interested in knowing who's liable. So, if this gentleman comes to speak to us, I think he should bring Scott with him, because I think Scott's. A big player here, whether he wants to be or not. So, so, good question, I think that should be approached. Okay, so moving on to, uh, sign permit for stomping grounds, uh, some background on this, Carolyn? This is for?
Um, well, this is for the flags that they have down there, it was brought to my attention that they have those flags, and. I wasn't sure if they were considered a sign, but they actually are in our ordinance, and they just need to have a permit, just, you know.
The other one did. Pick up in here.
One says smoothie, and the other one says what?
Coffee or something.
Espresso, like.
Espresso, okay? So, uh.
Are, are they time limited or?
No, they, they're considered a sign, so they just need to get a permit for them.
Okay, and it costs them twenty five dollars to get it approved, right? Okay, so. Um, do I have a motion to approve the sign for stomping grounds?
The move.
Moved, it's been moved? Jerry has seconded, any further comments? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
I, I.
Oppose?
You didn't let him say anything, shoot, I was.
Well, you were.
No, the ones at stomping grounds, could they just move them back just a hair? They, when you come up to the, um. Corner, it is kind of in the way. Yeah, it is, I, I think it's the one on this, on the main street. Might be a little bit too close to the road, is it, Garrett? Or do, you're younger than me, so your eyes are better, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't know this, but.
Okay.
Well, we should kind of look at it as, I don't think it's an area, but we should, not a big deal, move it, I assume, if they just steeled around, so.
Thank you, Garrett, would you look into that for us, worth of that, okay? So, then moving to, uh, nine one one, uh, they do have a flag. Two double-sided feathered flags. So, same situation, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
It's a move.
Kelly's moved. Do I have a second?
He did.
Okay, I guess Jerry is seconding then?
I've been seconding, but I'm just still waiting on their sign here.
Okay.
They're not in anybody's role view.
That I think not, there is.
Okay, so, uh, any other concerns or comments, discussion? If seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so nine one one is approved, and then we have Nana's Mercantile. Again, she has a ground pole sign, she's paid a permit fee, and it says. Open, oh, open, okay, so, would I have?
I'll, I'll make that motion to approve, then it's a mercantile sign.
Okay, Rick has moved, Stan has seconded, any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, then we have on noise for state wall, is that for a specific date or just?
No, it's the same, I just missed it when, at the last meeting, when all the noise permits were getting approved, um, so like. Rex's for a full year for that fifty dollars, and any of those, it has, I just overlooked it somehow.
Is there a time, it seemed like last year, that, that was kind of quite the residential, like, ten block, or was there not on there?
I mean, they have to follow what our nor- no, boy, that's. Noise ordinance says, um, so, but they just. And the ordinance says, you know, if they do know they're gonna have noise during certain hours and stuff, that they need to get a fence ordinance.
How's the neighbors feel about that?
Depends on what time it is.
If they're gonna have a band, they would have to come let us know and, and put in for that.
They're just able to have that as long as they have the noise coming. But there's restrictions on how late it can.
And it's, and it's a temporary permit.
Well, you have to renew it every year.
So if it got to be a problem and there were a lot of complaints with anybody's.
With them violating, you know, with how the ordinance reads.
Or even if there were a lot of complaints by the neighbors on any noise permit, then the, the council would have an opportunity to address that the next time it comes up.
Yeah, same as the Red Rock when it got there and Badlands.
That lot has houses on three sides of it. Tuesday or Wednesday night, of course, I'm getting old, I guess, Tuesday and Wednesday night. Live band, something might have to be up, street sweeping the streets or.
Okay, so we.
But I can see if you had a stereo going and, you know, music in the background, but as far as a band. Just makes me wonder.
Should we, should, should we, when Zach gets back, should we have him go, ask him to come talk to us about it? Cause I, I think that's valid.
I don't know that our ordinance is restrictive of the location. I mean, we maybe need to consider saying that if your establishment is within a residential location, then it needs to be addressed differently, but currently our ordinance doesn't say that, so then you're kind of like making up.
What, what, what are the rules?
Well, it's a pretty long ordinance, so I can't really reference it all to you. It's on the website.
But we couldn't say a time like.
There is a time already. There is a deduction of times. No, I don't know that it's two AM. I don't remember exactly how.
But then the way, the way. Yeah, so if it, the way it kind of reads from what I remember is if it's gonna go past that time or anything, they have to come to us.
Right, if they're gonna go beyond.
No permit shall be effective only between the hours of six AM and one A. That's a long time.
I just question if you can restrict him.
More so than anybody else.
Anybody else, just because.
We wouldn't even ask these questions if you would have been on that list.
That's true.
So, but Rick may develop one. If it becomes a problem and there's complaints and we can deal with it then. Would you agree with that, counsel? Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the noise permit for state wall?
I'll make that one.
Jerry is moved. So I accept that, Jim, and Kelly has seconded. Any other, uh, discussion, concerns?
Oh, somebody sends in a complaint, then we'll be discussing it again.
If he's in violation of the ordinance. Otherwise, you're gonna have to be looking at readdressing the ordinance.
Which we're doing all of them.
We're doing all of them. So that's something to keep in mind as we go through each ordinance that you may be. I mean, I'd say you can change it now, but since we're looking at doing that, it seems kind of senseless to not just address it. And you know, I mean, you can put any kind of restrictions in, say, you know, based on the location, if you're within a hundred feet of residential area, it applies differently, but currently that's not how it works.
Okay, so I'm motion on the floor, been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carried for the noise permit for state wall. That brings us to item sixteen, an ambulance report. Welcome, Lily.
Okay, so, um, as all of you know, the new elected board, we've we've been working pretty hard addressing all the challenges we have right now. As you remember, the, um, Penta County gave us fifteen thousand dollars for the comprehensive assessment. We expecting the result of this assessment next month, so hopefully, um, we will have something to report back to you by the end of June. Another thing we addressing right now is our scheduling. And it's not gonna be an ideal, but our payroll is over the head, uh, so we have to make some adjustments. So what are we trying to do? I'm trying to have one volunteer driver and one EMT per shift. Not ideal, but it's better than not having everyone's at all. Um, but this is, will help us with the payroll. So with that said, we are looking for volunteer drivers. We've been, uh, working with our local fire department and trying to rebuild this relationship that's somehow got lost in the process somewhere. Um, it's, it's a struggle for fire department itself to be, to go on calls, but they willing to work with us and help us out. So, we're not quite there yet, but we slowly getting there trying to get this scheduling under control. Then another thing, we, uh, we had a meeting a couple days ago and we reviewed our, um, scheduling fee for the billing, which has hasn't been reviewed for a few years. So that's me. Um, our fee schedule is staying the same way it was several years ago. And industry standard has changed a lot. So we have changed our fee for billing. Uh, now it's kind of near the industry standards. It's not low, just, we can't, we can't help our ambulance service with the volume of calls very steep, so we have to recruit these costs somehow. So we decided to raise the billing fee to get it to the one with the industry standards.
I don't understand what that.
The billing fee, you know, when you get a bill.
Like if I took the ambulance and then it'd go on, okay?
So we have to change all the.
For like fuel, there's a.
Okay.
For, uh, yeah. So, we hope it's gonna bring some additional revenue to us just doing this. Then another thing is, we realized, we didn't know that, but we apparently don't have an option to do online payments, digital payment. It's only was cash or check. So that's kind of not a good idea in a, uh, we're living in twenty twenty three right now and everybody using, uses credit card, probably anybody uses check or cash. So that's another step we taking. We're gonna sign up for the online payment, so any patient gonna be able to pay online or buy credit card or debit card, whatever it is. Giving more options to pay. Hopefully we can get a little bit more money now by doing this as well. Um, another thing, we have received two, two new life bags through the Department of Health, through the grant, um. Those life bags goes, it, I, I don't know exactly the price, but it's between maybe thirty to thirty five thousand dollars. So with that said, now we have two new life bags for two our ambulances. So we have two extra life bags we already had before and the previous board actually bought those life bags a couple of years ago, so they quite bring new pretty much. So we surplus it and we're gonna try to sell it, so we're gonna recruit some cost as well, so bring back money to our ambulance service. Um, then, I think this was everything. And lastly, in order to address our current challenges and secure the future of our service, we will, we actually implemented a restructuring plan. And the board of directors has, has made a decision to restructure the director's position. Uh, we haven't, uh, we have acknowledged that this dual role of, dual nature of this role as an EMT and a director, um, it's been kind of difficult, not effective, so as effectively made it first, um, we're gonna terminate our, um, former director position. And we're gonna work to develop an effort that's for the new director position. It's gonna be dedicated to administrative duties and separate from the EMT team.
What things are happening? Maybe first. And that's who I had. If you guys have any questions?
I commend the work that this board has done. You've all stepped up and carried a huge load. And Mike, thank you for representing the council in that situation and because it's taken a lot of your time and I appreciate that, that you've been a part of that scheme plan. So, things that you've said tonight are very encouraging in terms of your comps receivable. It looks like you're getting a handle on that. We're increasing the fees realist, to a realistic status is, I mean, we had to do the same thing with water, so we understand that. And so we very much appreciate what you and the board have done to what I call keep the wheels on the ambulance so that we can continue to have a service here. So thank you to each one of the people that are serving.
Well, thank, thank you to the city's for all the support. Thank you guys for taking the door. Appreciate it. Okay, is that, no question?
I have one question. What is the standard industry fee now? How, what is, what is exact, how much is it?
Well, I can't remember on top of my cap, I think now the mileage, we have mileage increased to eighteen dollars now, right? Thirteen before, which is way other. So we've been losing money along for several years. Increasing the fee. We should have been doing it annually, so it wouldn't look.
Right.
That being right now, so. This is one I remember too, that one, but the rest I don't remember.
Some of the materials that are, that are.
That's life support, like basic life support is, is, you can see as well. And I guess I didn't look in the percentage or it looks like from before. But we just, we pretty much went with, uh, recommendation of our billing company. Because they know our business, they see what we do with this and they gave us recommendation on the fee. We just wanted to, because we need to do something, we can't sit and wait and figure out. I mean, they get paid, we trust them. And there is, it's not highest fee probably gonna be, there is probably more, there, there is a higher fee in other, so, depending on the service ordinance. But we at least got it to the point where we need, we need to. Put under, you know, the word.
Right, thank you, Lily. Alright. So that brings us to chamber report.
Yeah, thank you so much for you guys tonight. Um, you'll notice by our blacked out windows there. That is for our, um, well, it's not our, we are having the um, first day of issue dedication ceremony. I think I put all those words together properly um, in the community center tomorrow. So that is going to be at eleven o'clock. I think it's scheduled until one or two. And, um, I think there's a invitation that is in your packets, I think, right? And so everybody is welcome to attend. Um, you can RSVP, um, even if you don't RSVP, still come. And they are putting out, um, endangered, a, a series of endangered stamp, that's hard words tonight too. Um, I think there's twenty different stamps and our location was chosen, uh, for the Black Cooted Barrett. And, um, according to Candy, she said that this is the smallest location that they've ever chosen for one of these ceremonies, so that's kind of cool. The last one was in Times Square. So, yeah, so kind of makes it like really, really clear about that. So they're gonna be using this room tomorrow for their green room, so. Rick, I saw you eyeball, you came in after we already talked about the, the covered windows, but that's what that's about, so.
I thought it was something more.
But yeah, no, that's just so that they don't have, uh, random people walking in here tomorrow. All the random people get to go in the big room, so. Um, yeah, so everybody if you can attend, it should be a really cool opportunity to watch. And then, uh, oh, the other thing is yesterday, I think it was yesterday, the representative for the South Dakota Retailers Association stopped in. And so I've been kind of talking to businesses when I've been going around and I just wanted to let you guys know and have it minutes and everything that starting July first, um, our South Dakota sales tax is going to decrease from four point five percent to four point two percent. So, um, she wanted to make sure that everybody knows because if you use a point of sale system, you might need to punch your work order in now to get that updated. It can take them some time to get to you, so. Um, and hopefully your, your provider knows all about it and is on top of it, but I would definitely double check and make sure that that decrease is noted.
Eighty?
Yes.
So July first, sales tax decreases four point five to four point three?
Four point two.
Two?
Yes.
Better.
Yep, yeah, I, I didn't know that decreases ever happen, but this one is there, so, yeah, and.
Okay, and you did indicate that's a South Dakota sales tax.
Yeah, it's a state sales tax.
Our city tax has not changed, our BBB amount has not changed?
So it's just the, the state.
So.
This is kind of, when they were talking about doing the food, adjusting the food, all that. This was kind of the.
It's not. A couple of years.
Yeah, I think there is a sunset, but I'm not sure what that is, but. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, item number eighteen talks about property cleanup. And I personally want to thank Jim Coates for the marvelous job you did of cleaning up your property near the railroad tracks. Um, it just looks wonderful, Jim. And you worked really hard to get that accomplished and.
I appreciate the city's help.
Absolutely, absolutely. Which, by that you mean that, uh, Garrett, uh, worked it out with you, so he offered a transport trailer. And, but you loaded and unloaded it, but it was just something helpful to get stuff from here to there, so. But thank you for doing that. And again, it goes back to what I was saying to Grant earlier, that citizens really do care how a wall looks. And you certainly did that when you stepped up and, and helped clean that area.
Just haven't had, just asking a lot of people to get trailers over there and just that having success, which you were the culmination of.
Do any of the other council members want to comment on that?
No, I just thank you and um, yeah, it, it looks really good and I'm sure it feels a lot better to have that done.
But are the, are the cars gone?
No, I'm still working on that.
Yeah, Kevin was supposed to get, get back to me on that.
I'd love to have him out of there.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the whole title thing was a bit of an issue, but he thought that he could get that remedied by you being the property owner and, and just filling out the paperwork.
Oh, so. Was someone called to specifically about that? Okay, so you guys are honored, thank you so much. Okay, any other comments? Alright, and we, like you, we all have, need to do that with our own properties too, to make sure that our businesses are always, um, tip top and, so, and as well as our homes. Alright, so that moves us, um, Stephanie, to, it's right at eight o'clock. I know you have to be departing soon. Would you like to do your, uh, attorney report? We're in item number nineteen on the agenda.
Um, yep, that sounds good to me. Um, okay, so as the council know was, um, our appellate pleadings, um, briefing deadline is a week from today, May twenty fifth. And, um, Mr. Parsons, uh, has an incomplete draft um, that he just submitted to Kent and I for, back, um, two days ago. So we're starting to read through that. There's also a. There's also a statement of fact and statement of the case. Um, so far, the brief is forty-five pages, uh, which is well in excess of the ten thousand word limit. So um, the um, revisions and editing that we're working on is downsizing and cutting out anything redundant or unnecessary, which just has, has to happen in any appellate brief uh, to meet that word limit. Um, and then um, our hope would be that we can um, get a cleaned up draft to council members for a final set of eyes in time to file it a wee bit before the actual twenty-fifth. So we're working on that. Um, but um, but Ron Parsons himself is actually now working on another appeal. So he had to take about four days off. So right now it's kind of in Cantonized court. Um, and then um, as far as timeframe moving forward, um, Loves will have forty-five days from the, the date that, the, the twenty-fifth, which is our appeal deadline, they'll have forty-five days for their response brief. So that would put us um, roughly mid-July. And then we will have another thirty days for our reply brief, which would put us roughly mid-August, which in Ron's estimation, uh, best case scenario, will get docketed on the Supreme Court's fall law school um, hearing deadline um, for the, the cases that they take before the law school. So hopefully we're right on schedule. If, if Ron guessed it right, that's what we would be expecting. Um. I think that is all that I um, that I really am at liberty to say for a public report. Questions?
So it looks like before May twenty-fifth, you'll have this appellate briefing. And by mid-July, uh, Love should have their, uh, their response. And then by mid-August, you have an opportunity to reply to, to Loves. Do I have that right?
Yep.
And, and that would happen in mid-August.
Yep, our deadline would be mid-August.
So then. How do you find out if it's going to be oral comments at the law school? Or if it will go to written uh, on the regular Supreme schedule?
That is entirely up to the Supreme Court. Um, they invite oral commentary. So um, usually, and, and Ron kind of reiterated this, usually when there's a case that is considered a matter of wide or public interest, those are the cases that um, the Supreme Court, whether or not it's really already made up its mind, those are the cases that usually get invited on for oral argument. Because, for example, in our case, this is of interest to every municipality in the state. So um, we would be very surprised if it doesn't get put on for oral argument.
Okay.
And then thing I was going to address, thank you Carolyn for catching uh, the um, reference to sales tax. Uh, that's, I'll certainly remind Ron's assistant to delete that reference. Again, they're charging a flat fee anyways, so if they paid sales tax on this, uh, it would just be them paying the sales tax. It wouldn't be anything extra to the city, but that's a good point and I will remind him of that.
Because even though uh, in reviewing that invoice, yes, there's a flat fee, but then there was, there's expenses which amounted to about twelve hundred dollars on this invoice, I think. And that's where there was a incorrect tax amount or there was tax applied. Am I correct on that?
Uh, yes, because he hasn't even, he hasn't even put an hourly rate on his time. So that's not even being calculated at this time and it, it won't be. But yes, of the, of the expenses that have been tabulated, uh, it's just the actual expenses. And sales tax was noted on those, so I'm going to contact the secretary and ask for a resend without.
Okay, and so kind of thinking about some of those expenses, because I've had council people ask me up and I thought it was just me that didn't know, but others don't either. What kind of expectation do we have from you and Mr. Hague in terms of what your expenses are? Just like if you have to review this massive document and get it down to ten, then would those be the kind of fees that we can expect? Or are those fees, because it has to deal with this direct appeal, do they fall under the twenty-five thousand cap?
No, um, Kent Hague's fees have never been connected with Ron Parsons' fees. And my fees as city attorney have never fallen under Ron Parsons' retainer agreement with the city. Um, as far as, I would be willing to speculate, uh, Kent's time, you could ask him that. I could ask him for you if you'd like. Um, but it would be speculation. It, it's, you know, it's a total of um, it's a total of almost eighty pages of legalese that needs to be reviewed, condensed, revised. Um, for me, I, I certainly will try and keep my time to a minimum. And it would be at my usual hourly rate of one hundred dollars an hour. And Kent's time, I'm sure, will be at his usual hourly rate, which I can't remember, it's three fifty.
Three fifty.
Carolyn.
Three fifty, yes. So I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. We can expect those kind of additional expenses um, to be added on to the twenty-five thousand, correct?
Well, they have nothing to do with Ron Parsons' invoice, but yes, Kent will be paid for his time and I will be submitting invoices for mine.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that. So then after uh, the oral arguments, whether it's at the, the school at USD or if it goes to the regular Supreme Court, when, when would Ron, uh, when would he think that we would get an answer back from the Supreme Court, one way or the other?
That is, is completely speculative. Um, I've seen, I've seen it take well over a year. Um, I can ask Ron what he thinks. And I, I think it's fair to say that if the Supreme Court calls it for oral argument, they kind of prioritize it to um, to then deliver their opinion, kind of top priority because it's such a, a public uh, question and matter. But I've definitely seen it take well over a year for them to um, release their opinion. So I can ask Ron about that, but all he can do is guess.
Sure. And again, you, you've mentioned how this is really of great interest to every municipality. And so, and it, and so as I've visited with other council people, as we've crossed paths at different municipal things, none of them seemed very excited about helping pay the expenses, though. Have you, how are you doing on that quest?
Um, so I discussed that with Mr. Parsons. And he definitely thought that um, that the um, South Dakota Municipal League would be interested in, in probably joining us or um, or submitting a, a brief alongside of us. But for one thing, um, we're past the timeliness for them to have been able to submit an amicus curi brief anyway. So the only thing they could do is kick in money. And Ron had a concern, um, given that the South Dakota Municipal League is also affiliated with South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, that it would be um, it would be potentially a, a conflict of interest. Um, so he said, he cautioned, we probably would need to avoid that. So we, we did discuss it, uh, he advised against it.
Okay, because the response I've been getting to is most, most of them say, we're working to try to bring businesses in, not keep businesses out. So that's kind of the reaction I have gotten from people I approach, so I'm not getting very far. So, okay, so anyway.
The question that we would be uh, asking the Municipal League to join us on is whether a municipality has any discretionary authority outside of zoning, not whether they want businesses to come in or out.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, any other comments or questions for Ms. Trask today?
Fantastic. Well, thank you all. I'm ahead of eight-thirty, but if you don't need anything else from me or if there's something later in the agenda that I could quick address, um, I'm happy to do that. And I appreciate you guys accommodating my schedule tonight.
Absolutely. Well, safe travels for you and, and your activities.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Okay, thank you. Am I free to go? Forty-one fifty.
Thank you, Steph.
No?
All right.
All right.
Have a goodie.
Same to you.
Bye.
Thank you. Do I have to do anything here? Okay, because it's came up to that, uh, phone card. Okay, so that moves us into um, my mayor report. I am number twenty. Um, I did um, take extra time. Usually um, mayor committee assignments come out at the first meeting. However, I took a little bit of extra time. So especially wanting to meet with the Community Center and Hospitality Group. And that involved the new executive director, as well as the chamber president and Legion rep, the VFW rep and auxiliary rep, because that was a committee that I never got to sit down with last year. So we had a, a conversation and learned a, a lot about the background with this, this uh, community center and the Legion group and, and what their activities are. So that gave us a great opportunity to learn a little bit. Some of the citizens that have been um, involved in committees wanted to not be involved, so we removed those. And we added um, the, under emergency services, you might notice that it's ambulance slash clinic now, under that group. So those are some of the changes that, or updates that um, I made or changed from where we were at last year. Over the last uh, year, my, my goals were to improve communications with employees and constituents. And the monthly employee meetings that you guys uh, supported went very well. And I thank you for that support because I think that really did help communication. So I appreciate you for that. Another um, model that I had last year was Team Wall, which was built around pride in the community as well as um, working together. And I loved how the lifeguards were the very first group to buy into that and support that. Another thing that I worked on was to get the four Ws headed in the same direction. And so that meant the Wall Council, the Wall Chamber, the Wall Economic Development, and the Wall School. I thought that was important. And so things like having Pandy come and report um, here helped us understand because except for Mike, who's got kids in high school, and of course Dan, he's going to pick up on a roll here quick because he's going to be going to kindergarten graduations and everything else real soon. But otherwise, we kind of separated. So it's important to know what the school is doing. And I also might add, that school is a tremendous selling point for us as we try to, to move forward. Um. If you looked on the website, on checking on schools, Wall Schools is rated to be the ninth highest school in the state. Am I right about that, Katie?
Yes.
And not only she, but people that are trying to um, apply for jobs at the national park, I've learned, also know how the Wall School is rated. And so that's very important to our community. So this year, my goal is to continue to work on communications. And by that, I mean listening to concerns and responding to questions and working and trying to be transparent and accountable. And so my theme is going to move from Team Wall to Grow Wall. And the areas that I want to work on is housing, which will utilize the new infrastructure that you, the council, has invested in, which will help meet the needs of employers because they need places for people to live. And I'm, I started conversation through the chamber, through a chamber mem- member, meeting first and then personally going to the Badlands National Park and sitting down with twelve of their uh, management folks to learn about what their housing needs are. And I will continue to work and explore with Elsewhere Authority and Black Hills Housing Trust Funds and exploring that. So that's the housing. Then I'm also going to continue to work on retaining, expanding and recruiting new businesses. I attended last week a meeting in Phillip with Western Dakota, hosted by Western Dakota Tech, and learned about building, Build Dakota Scholarship, which would help recruit workers here. And I'm going to suggest something to the economic development to try to help build from inside. And again, our school is a huge selling point for us. Another area of concern is Main Street. Jerry Morgan men- mentions it all the time about the number of open doors we have as opposed to closed. So that's something that we need to address and we'll work on. And in the industrial park, as far as starting to fill that. So as well as other areas in our city that can be developed. But there's something I really need help from you guys on. Because what I am about, out and about at these different meetings, whether it's in Rapid City, where my husband was in Pierre and it was brought up to him yesterday, or Phillip by way of Belfus, people say to me, Wall has a lot going on. And you know what? We do. We just completed the Hanson subdivision. We're starting Echo Valley on Monday. The airport is going great guns. Fourth Avenue is going to be addressed soon. Wall meets, achieve their CIS. And again, as I said, Wall School is rated number nine. But I keep running into this question. I need you guys to help me with the answer. And that question is, is the city council going to treat me as a housing developer or as a business person like they did where they have Loves?
Mary, I, I, I think, you know, you, you have a big personal opinion on that. And so, so do a lot of people. And I think that uh, you know, there's a lot of, there's two sides to the Loves thing. And you're very pro Loves and, and, and that's great. But uh, the Loves situation is not a reflection on how the council is uh, treated other businesses. It's a unique deal.
It is.
We're pro business. We, we have new business coming to the wall all the time.
Okay, so that's what I want your help on. I want those kind of comments. What do you want me to say to developers and businesses? You want me to say, Wall City Council is pro-business?
Yes. Yes.
We are.
Okay, that's what I'm asking for. And I'm gonna give you an opportunity to put that in writing, and that's what I'm gonna go back to those people with, because I run into it all the time.
It's funny, I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I, I find that really surprising.
Yeah.
That you run into that all the time. The, the, the people, uh, that you talk to, their main concern is the love situation. I'm just saying.
Well, I'm telling you, that is what happens. And I want you to help me come up with an answer.
We're pro-business. We're pro-business. That's your answer, right there. Isn't it? Isn't that what you want?
That's what I wanna hear from you guys. I want that from you guys, so I know what that answer is, because I've struggled with it. It's hard to explain. It's hard to explain.
It's not hard to explain.
So I'm gonna ask you.
We just opened up a quilt shop. They just have that. That's a new business. You keep, you keep marketing on loves, and I'm thinking marketing back, Mark, Mary. What are you, are pro-business?
Okay, you're.
And I'm, I, I've held on to this, and I haven't brought it up, but you seem to wanna bring it up again. So I'm going to mention, again, I called Diddy's down in Kimball. You got information from the, no, from the finance officer that it has an effect. Well, I called Diddy's, who is a local business, who hired local people. Her guy lives in Kimball, hires, um, manager and everything. I asked them, has, has loves affected you? Yes, they have. I talked to their manager. She's been there for six years. They used to be open twenty-four hours. They are now open just until eleven. They used to have two people on duty. They now are at one. I don't get it why people want to hurt the people that live here. I, I just, I can't understand why you are so pro loves. Somebody that lives down in Oklahoma and is taking all the money down there. You would rather see Mike Anderson hurt, um, this new guy that just bought BJ's, Rick, um, Mike, uh, Michael Ludeman, new bit, new young man with young kids. You would rather see them hurt business-wise and then bring in loves. I'm not that way. My focus is on the townspeople. The people that live here, that pay taxes, that have kids that go to school here, that have homes, that pay taxes. I'm very passionate about it. My focus is on the people that live in Wall. I could give two hoots about loves and Mr. and Mrs. Loves. Good for them that they're so, so wealthy. I am more interested in if Michael Ludeman is going to have a business when loves comes in, or if Alvin Glasgow has a business when they, when loves comes in. Or I don't.
I, I, I think of, uh, the big, big deal and, and one of the, uh, uh, reasons that there's a lot of opposition to loves going out there is the Kelly Edition and the forty-five families that live out there.
We've talked about that, and we've talked and talked, but we haven't ever addressed the people that have businesses here, because it's gonna hurt them too. And I think as a mayor and as a city council, our focus should be on our, our townspeople. I think that's our first and main goal here. Yes, I want businesses to come in here. Yes. But if it's going to affect my neighbors, I'm gonna put my foot down. I, I, that's not, that's not what we want. I want the people that live here to strive and to survive and live the life that they want in Wall. And loves affects homegrown people, homegrown towns, homegrown businesses. And I talk to them. I didn't, and you look on their, you, honestly, you look on their taxes, their tax for this year up to date from the South Dakota retailers is down from a year.
Have you noticed the lost arrest area at three o'clock in the morning, bumper to bumper trucks? That's not the trucker's fault. It's a national law that they have to pull over. They have to, so now.
So, you're telling me, is that your boss in the room? You don't, you, you care about the people that live here.
Oh, I sure do. I, I can see a lot of sales tax coming to this town. They wanted to give our school bunches of money.
They wanted to give them thirty-three thousand dollars right away.
Two.
Two thousand. Not every year.
We just, we used to have implement dealers in this town. We used to have welders in this town. You know what? All our agriculture.
I just, I don't understand why you can't get behind people that live here. You are more focused on somebody that lives in Oklahoma.
No, I'm sorry, the sales tax, the business.
The gas tax, gas tax does both.
You know, really, we got this going before the South Dakota Supreme Court.
I don't know why you keep bringing it up.
You know, I, 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 I think that, that having this ongoing thing, let, let Supreme Court sort it out and we'll take it from there.
And we're pro-business. We don't need to bring it up again.
So there seems to be a mistrust of the council. That's what I'm trying to point out. So if you're indicating to us.
Then they need to come and talk to us.
We're all the way across the board. So if we recruit someone on a state that's bringing in agri prec- ag precision robotics company, we're good with that?
Is it gonna be in my backyard? Or is it gonna be in the Kelly Edition backyard? Maybe I wouldn't have. I wouldn't.
It might. It could be, if that's commercial land out there. It could be.
Oh, no. Let's move on. Let's move on. Let's move on.
Jim, you were trying to.
Well, I just, you know, my comment will be, you know, the way Wall is set up right now, there's, there's nowhere to live. If you bring in a big business, there's nowhere to live. All these little houses are getting used up for VRVOs now. Uh, getting rented out for two hundred bucks. You know, a lot of people are starting to get into this now. So that decreases your, your housing even more. And this is a problem. I mean, you know, uh, you know, that's a major problem. And there's, anything coming in here now, I mean, I, I can't find staff. I couldn't, I haven't, I haven't been able to find staffing for years at the Cactus. I've been struggling, you know, the Cactus was open. I was struggling. I was working twelve, fifteen hours a day, and I, you know, I had nowhere for anyone to live. And, and we had the results that we had.
And so that's why we're trying to recruit developers and builders. And as I'm in that process, these are the questions I get ha- asked. And same way with business people.
I'd like to make another comment. You know, I've lived here my whole life, and you know, the town has been stuck at a certain population and actually been seeing a decrease for a decade now. Correct?
Yes.
So, you know, and, and, you know, I, I know we're, we're, I'm trying to be positive. So I'm, 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 um, you know, from what I've seen for the last thirty years, and I've been here since I got out of college, you know, we've got some new restaurants, we've got some new bars, and now we've got food trucks. You know, we need to attract other types of businesses. Well, you know, you're.
Diversify.
Diversify, yes. Year-round businesses, because us guys that are making it on, I mean, Rick and me and the motels, we're, we're trying to make a year's worth of salaries for everybody in a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and fifty days. It's a, and it's tough.
It is.
It's very difficult.
So that's what I'm trying to say. We're trying to develop housing, but we need outside investors. And as we expand, we have to identify if, for instance, the Precision A example I just gave, if that's.
With, with the industrial park, the Precision A.
Well, I would hope that's where we could recruit them to, but seriously, if it's commercial land, they could also go off to Kelly Edition. So you, that's, that's our, the question. And that's what I want you to think about. And I will come back to you with a question, again, to describe what your position is. And I did not expect it to be tonight. I want you to think about it and help me as I move forward with these conversations.
I give you my answer. I'm pro-business. And that's it.
Okay.
I don't need to think about it.
All right. Very good. All right. With that being said, you know.
Question.
Oh, Lily.
About committees. But before I say, uh, after the question, probably gonna defend Mary a little bit here, and I understand where she's coming from. She might be, there sounds like a lot of emotions going on here from all of you. But I work for economic development. It's becoming an issue when you go to all these meetings. You guys can go to all these meetings. You don't believe in all those people. It's out there. They will after all this. So I feel it. Make it happen. I'm gonna defend Jerry, because he's a gentleman. He was spoke up. I don't want you guys to take it very personal. Everybody has a point. But my question is about committees. Emergency committee, who is on this committee?
Yeah, Mark, Mike Anderson.
So just city council members.
Yeah.
In that case, yes.
Do you guys just, do you meet or you just send those people to, like? Because my question was, if you guys have meetings, is that something like, do you discuss about fire department or ambulance?
Well, do you get what the issue is and then it's directed to that?
I almost, I feel like, and I don't know, but this, you might need to have those representative entities if you have some kind of discussion, but we all aware of what is going on in emergency services in this town. Just as a joke, because we as an ambulance service are gonna try to bring in a, a group of people together from, um, surrounding towns, from the city, from the county, from townships, just to have discussions. But this is the only emergency service, and it doesn't benefit all of us. I don't know, just, just a thought. But I don't know what the initial idea of this committee.
Well, this was established long before I was here. But that's why Dan and Mike, attending ambulance meetings was because that's where, what their task.
Yeah, that's why I understand. But if we could have an actual emergency services meetings all together, just a small group, so we, this is how we can, it's like a networking group. I don't know, but ju- just a thought. Because, uh, now we go into the fire department and talk to them, trying to, so this way we know what is going on.
So what you're saying is pretty much just have, maybe have a police representative, have firefighters if they want to, have ambulance, have you guys all, all, all together, and like have maybe a quarterly meeting or every six months meeting, something like that.
Yeah, just the margins of it.
I like meetings, you know that.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, Mike, do you want?
Yeah, maybe two a week if. No, I think it's a good idea. It, it just, it kinda helps, um, you know, me to make the city aware, uh, law enforcement. You know, if, if we're struggling with drivers, it would be good for law enforcement to, to understand that, um, that it could be an issue, um, getting a driver, um, you know, people in the community that, that ask a lot of the questions, you know, and I mean, that's part of it is, is sometimes I get asked questions that that are answered, um, there's a lot of conversation on them, and that's kind of my frustration with the public on a number of these issues of these community people, um, who have all of these ideas um, and concerns and, eh, eh, but they never, they never come to voice those. And I encourage them to do that. I mean, eh, those conversations need to take place, you know? Hey, what's going on with the ambulance stuff? Well, you know, that a lot, a lot of stuff that's going on with the ambulance stuff right now is getting things sorted out, getting drivers. I mean, basically, it's just allowing it to continue to function, because if, if we don't change some things, it's not going to. And try to explain that to them. Everybody has an answer, but nobody has, um, what it takes to be a part of that solution, you know? It's, well, so-and-so can drive, and it's like, well, you know, I'll talk to them, and then the person's like, well, no, they wanted me to, but I really can't, you know? I have this going on. So it's, you know, just trying to get people, um, with all of these ideas and, um, opinions to meet and, and come up with some of those.
Because county has a mor- emergency management, and this person knows everything in each department, so they have a whole picture. And if here, it feels like it's, I don't know, bits and pieces.
So you, you're recommending a quarterly meeting of that?
I don't, I'm not recommending anything. Just, it's my thought.
You're suggesting that a quarterly or semi-annual meeting would help get es- especially police, fire, ambulance, and clinic
Yeah.
on a similar page. I'm looking at this. Stan and Rick, do you see a value of something like that under essential services?
Yeah, I think there'd be nothing. Good.
Planning and zoning, they tend to meet as needed. So emergency and essential, um, and that would, like, essential services, would that be just general public, that we just put a notice out that we were gonna have a conversation and and invite people in, whereas we specifically know who police is, we know who the fire chief is, we know ambulance, and same way with clinic. I mean, I can think of people that fit those, whereas these other committees, I was wondering how that would be approached. So if you guys think about that and come up with a response, a suggestion, and how often you'd want to do that. Okay? Great. Thank you, Lily, for that suggestion. Okay, any other comments on the, the assignments or the, uh, committee list there? All right. Well, then that brings us to the next item, which would be the finance officer.
So you would then tell to them? Or did you have?
Um, remind me what we were gonna.
I think you covered housing really well, Mary. Covered all the areas that we're getting done, working on.
Um, I was just gonna give a cool update. Uh, some of this will have to go to executive session, but we do have a total of eight lifeguards, uh, that have three new ones and five returning. Um, we are planning for a meeting with all of them on Monday evening to get everything in order, scheduling and all that. So, and then the training, most all of them need to be recertified, or the new ones, of course, have to be certified, and that training will be going on in Phillip um, over the, more of the weekend. And so we will be talking about that at the meeting as well. And then I had sent out to you guys, I don't know if you had time to look at it, but just the wage proposal, just with some information, but of course, that'll have to go into executive session, especially that. Just the wage proposal, just with some information, but of course, that'll have to go into executive session, especially that.
The meeting is, I'm sorry, the meeting is at what time?
Monday at six o'clock. Um, so talking about the committee, there was something that came up, uh, dealing with the. Question on clinic and the agreement and stuff, so I was just gonna wait to reach out to you guys while I had you here. If there was a day next week that, um, would work to have a clinic meeting, meeting. Which of course, Dan's not here now, so that doesn't, isn't very helpful, but you're still okay with eight o'clock meetings in the mornings? So I will reach out to them then. And then, um, my next item was the Catholic Church Parade for the Purpose Christie. Um, that event will be happening on June eleventh at noon. Their proposal is to have twenty-five to thirty people involved with that, and they may have a couple of horses. They just wanted to get city approval, uh, with their parade route, and I gave you a map on that.
What we're telling is the map in the packet.
It's just around that block, is that?
Basically, they'll go around and then they'll, it's like they'll kind of go back.
So what day is that again?
July eleven.
And that day is a? So do you want us to make the motion or, uh?
Yeah, I mean, are you guys okay with that? Do you have any? No, they plan to try to stay on the sidewalk as much as possible, of course, the horses probably won't be on the sidewalk. Um, but.
Okay. It's been moved, then you're making a motion, a second?
Second.
I'm abstaining.
Rick is abstaining, Mike is seconded. Um, any other discussion or concerns, comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries.
And that was all I have to put on there.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if you guys noticed, but we got the crosswalks painted, three of the four, we still have one more to paint from. The Welsh motel over to the corner pantry.
They look very nice.
Thank you. Hey Garrett, are you working on the center thing out here?
The middle one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I decided to try just white instead of painting that green stripe on there to see. You know, I don't know what the green stripe brings to it, you know, it's just, I hate to say it, it's more of a pain to. Tape it out.
White seems pretty noticeable, yeah.
So we did, we repainted it the other morning, um, got that all done.
Way better than having those two colors.
I've got a concern I'd like to address as well is, um. Up on the boulevard, those double milk trucks seem to like to park right alongside the Fat Boys. And I'd like to have, uh, no semi parking on that, right in front of the Fat Boys restaurant. If I decide to open it, this, you know, but I, I just. They cover the, the whole driveway up with the double decker semis, and you know, I've gone over there and asked them several times nicely. You know, if they could just park on the other side of the boulevard or, you know, you understand what I'm saying? They basically cover up the whole building and they cover up the entrance, uh, with the double, the two. Two, two trailers of the milk trucks. And, you know, I'm not trying to cause any trouble for them or anything, but, you know, it's gonna become a problem with the, with, with my, with the business there. Uh, when it does eventually get open again. You know, if I could have a no semi trailer parking attached to that pole right there in front. I would appreciate that tremendously, because I mean, even before when it was open, it was, they were basically covering the whole. Building up, you know, and, yeah, that's not good for business.
About how long are they?
It's a, that's a, uh, state highway. It'd have to go to the DOT.
Okay.
For sign over there.
Plus the fact, we said no semi trucking parking there during our snowstorms, we really needed that space.
Yeah, so actually, state highway goes all the way out past the stool. And then from the common sense, in front of the common sense.
So, but we, we can.
I can get you some contact.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it is a problem, because they cover up the entrances to the driveway, yeah.
So when you get that open, we can.
I don't know why they, it's about every day. Yeah, oh yeah, and they used to do it down by Dairy Queen in the front. And I don't know why they would do it.
Side by side to.
Well, what they're doing is, is one truck is empty and one truck is full, so they pull up. And they're both double loaded with two trailers. He disconnects, pulls over to here, he pulls over to here, they back up, they rehook one of these, one goes west, all right?
What they need is a warehouse here, so they wouldn't have to do that. See, they got some new ones in the rapid like that. Okay, anything else?
Um, working on the pool, been draining it and cleaning it and getting ready.
Painting.
Painting, yeah, we painted, we painted the bathroom. Or painted, we're moving from last year. Um, and then, you know, once we get all caught up with that, I still have to paint the, the parking stripes on main and over. Uh, by the powerhouse and in front of the red rock. And on the other side of the backyard, and then soon we do that, we'll start working on some potholes and see if we can get some of those filling.
Okay.
And probably you're gonna have to start fogging for mosquitoes.
They're starting.
Yeah, we were painting out here the other morning, they were pretty bad, so.
Okay.
So yeah, we'll start putting the larva side in the water holes and stuff, so.
All right.
And I don't know, did we talk about cleanup day, cleanup day went pretty good, um, got seventy-six tires.
Is that more than usual?
No, it's down a little bit, so.
And for a reason that's remarkable is that's five dollars a tire?
Five, yeah, we pay diesel five dollars a tire to dispose of them.
Okay. City council does, the city?
City does, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I don't think so. Um, the wells, you know, we got new pumps and stuff, I think I talked about that last time, we have some issues with those today.
Okay, well, you really, the mowers seem to be working.
Oh yeah, yeah. Yeah, moving really good, I haven't driven one yet, but. What's that?
You can tell who the new guy is online, he don't worry to PPE. Just one thing I wanted to remind the council, I've already informed Carolyn. The curbs got torn up on the corner of Fat Boys, completely ripped out.
That was from the DOTs.
So I, the, the, does the city do that then, or who, 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 you know, who's responsible for fixing that?
The DOT.
The DOT.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, is there any? Is there any other items for discussion?
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple, um, last night we had a library meeting and, um. They, well, the library board wants to put. Uh, a couple more signs around the building. Because people don't seem to realize that it's a library, they think it's a restroom. So they wanna put that little blue sign with the guy reading the book. And I think that's all you want, isn't it, you don't wanna, yeah, put one maybe by the door. Eh, eh, can they, and I guess is the question, is it okay if they do that? Um.
Yeah. Probably not on the building, probably, right, so just on a pole.
Yeah, it's just one of those metal things, but I think.
You could maybe find, do they make like a vinyl one you could stick on the north door? To, maybe, or just print something off them, but isn't it?
Well, we got a sign, um. To put in the doors, and also lists our hours and everything.
Okay.
But people can't, I was reading.
Oh yeah, I know.
What are they doing going to the library? Picture books, picture books.
Or they think it's a museum for the mo- uh, memorial.
No, I don't see any problem, we can put them up.
Okay. Okay, we're, we'll work on research on that.
Okay, and then the other thing that was brought up, that you, we had, there's a hose on the spigot by the, on the police station. And seems like there are people that are liking, wanting to use it for campers and water and everything.
Heck yeah, that's where purification gets their water for.
I know.
Flowers, so, yeah, that's, I've caught contractors over there filling their tanks.
We actually had to do something with the credit union because people would just start using theirs, so we had to put like a. App or something on it.
Well, what we could do is I could, um, maybe get a fitting. Cause they make one, they have to have like a square key to turn it on and off, maybe just hang that inside there.
I'm sorry, would you mind? I, I mean, I bet, I bet we'd save quite a bit, I, cause I think campers still, I mean. I, I'm serious, I know they've done that to the motel.
Yeah, one of like, one of those rollers one time was backed up there and it's like, what is he doing there, over there, and you just spill the water.
Yeah.
So, no, I didn't, that's not.
Okay.
Definitely do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna address the signs and the water. Okay, any other items for discussion?
Um, I never did get a call back on the camera situation from the de- department, um, uh, transportation. But Garrett, actually, I called him and asked him if, who I could talk to that might know. And I called up to their office, um, and yeah, I left a message and. Not even quite sure I got to the right person, the right department, any of that. But anyway, um, Garrett ended up giving me, uh, Mike Carlson's phone number. And he ended up calling me back right away and said, got my email address and said that he would give me all that information, like. All the way down to the models of the cameras that they use, who they use for a provider, all that stuff, so.
Okay, so you're gaining it.
Yeah, when I hear back, well, I at least got to talk to them, so that's, that's.
You're gaining it.
Yeah.
Pushing zero and eventually somebody is.
Yeah, but that's probably not the person you wanna talk to when they say hello. They're probably pretty upset with you, but when I hear back, I will let Carolyn know and get back on the agenda.
Okay, very good, all right.
And one more, Mary, I'm sorry. Sorry, Stan, boy, I'm getting it. Glen Street, they're still, even semis are. Raising down that, um, the sign isn't doing a doggone thing. You know, it's, it's a big one, it's flashy, slow down, slow down. I don't know, I know the speed bumps aren't gonna work, the rumble strips aren't gonna work. I've seen a speed hump that's, you know, kinda wider. And they paint it yellow, I, I, I don't, it's, they really are starting to speed even more, so. I don't, and I know what your thoughts on that, Garrett.
Gonna put it in front of your house?
I know, I know, well, I can't hear anything, so it doesn't matter.
I have noticed, it seemed like the last few days, you see a lot of cars being pulled over by our little.
They're, yeah, yeah.
While I'm watching myself.
But I, 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 I'm just bringing that up, we, we haven't found a, uh, an answer yet for that.
You're expressing a concern about speeding on Glen Street?
Yeah, cause that's been an ongoing thing.
Put a fake sign up that says monitored by cameras or something, they'd be fine and don't put up the camera, they just put up the sign. Put up a fake sign.
They don't even read that, Jimmy.
Monitored by cameras, yeah.
Buy a couple old police cars and seven.
That cop car sat across from my house and they stepped on it.
Okay, any other items?
Yes.
Oh.
No, everybody went, that blue car is still there, that guy, if these cars were going back to work, he worked a heck of a lot of hours. There at nine o'clock, it's there at three thirty in the morning, just was curious if they ever marked the tires on.
I can reach back out and ask if they did.
Yeah, I don't.
Have you ever seen it move?
Yeah. Yeah, well, when that truck was parked there for four or five days, it was gone, and now the truck's gone and the car's there again, so. Somebody that trucks.
Hmm.
I guess, I don't, that's just what I noticed.
Well, that would make sense.
That, that would make sense to me then too, it just, you never, it's always sitting there.
Like he's on.
Where, where's it at, Jerry?
Down here, s- be north of the Tesla parking.
Okay.
But it seems like he grabs the same parking spot every time he would.
Yeah, and I don't think it's moved for probably a week.
It'd take that long, okay.
May I have one thing?
Oh, okay.
Glenn, I regret calling back.
That's okay.
On the, we need, we need to get on Dana about the yards over there from the Glen Street project.
I thought he had the, the company that said that they were coming out as soon as they.
They haven't done anything, I mean, it's ridiculous. Remember, he said that.
Oh yeah.
We even had the name of the company. Yeah, Three Sons, yeah.
Okay.
I haven't tried calling Three Sons, but.
Well, maybe give Dana a call and.
So yeah, it seems to be.
Carol, will you put that on another call list for yourself? Okay, anything else for items for discussion? Stan, what would, what do you wanna bring up?
Move to executive session.
No, next city council meeting is going to be Monday, June fifth at six thirty. Okay, I have a motion to move to executive session, second?
Second.
Moved in second, any more comments, concerns, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, what do we have to read though? I, can I read it after the fact, Mary? We need to have a motion to move to executive session for the purposes of discussing legal personnel issues according to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay, now we did it right, okay, Stan, second.
I'd like to address the council in private. For just a few minutes, if that's possible.
Okay.
Off the record.
A few moments, okay, all right, we're going to executive. Okay, we'll call this out of executive session and, um, to address. Uh, first of all, the lifeguards, uh, for the pool this summer, when I have a motion.
And make a motion to approve the dollar increase over last year, with its starting wages. Well.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Kelly has moved, Jerry has second, any further discussion, comments or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, the other item that we address is a new public works hire, do I have a recommendation?
I would like to make the motion that we hire Gary Vernon at twenty-three fifty an hour for the public works position.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries, are there any other business that needs to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting.
So are these things for us?
Yes.
They are, I'm taking them.